Good evening and welcome. This is the October 3rd, 2022, meeting of your Menlo Park Planning Commission. We are very glad you've decided to join us this evening. Established by state law, our Planning Commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park, pointed to four-year terms by our city council. Our Planning Commission is not a policy-setting body, that's what the city council does. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance. These can be found on the city website. We also review all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with these projects. We work in close partnership. We greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division. These folks are responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city's zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a Planning Commission meeting this evening, we are really glad you're here, and we encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public. And to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk this evening, Christine Beegan, to explain how members of the public can participate. Ms. Beegan, please take it away.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Regarding procedures for communicating, the commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. A member of the staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you're displaying a presentation. We kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item, unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. With that said, I hand it back to Chair DeCarty.
Terrific, and thank you. So with that, let me turn to item B on our agenda, which is roll call. I'll ask each commissioner to unmute themselves and verbally respond to make sure that everybody can hear. And I will try in alphabetical order. I believe Commissioner Barnes has said he's having some technical difficulties. And I do not see him here at the moment. Hopefully, he can join later on. Commissioner Doe?
Present. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Chair Harris.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Commissioner Riggs?
Present. Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioner Tate?
Present.
Fantastic. And we have one opening at the moment on the commission, so that has five of us here this evening and a quorum. I'll turn to Agenda Item C and Acting Principal Planner for our city, Corinne Sandmeyer, for reports and announcements. Sandmeyer?
Good evening, Chair DeCarty and Commissioners. I don't have any reports or announcements, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sandmeyer at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move along to Item D on our agenda, which is public comment. So under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or your political jurisdiction in which you live. Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So Ms. Beegan, I'll turn it over to you to move us through public comment.
Sure. Thank you, Chair DeCarty. As a reminder, members of the public can press the hand icon on your screen upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, press star nine on your keypad to notify staff you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter, please inform the staff at the start of your comment, and we'll ensure that the other commenter gets to speak after you finish your comment. And right now, I don't see any comments below on our screen.
All right, we'll give it just a minute if people need to find the appropriate button to push.
Okay, looks like there aren't any hands raised.
All right, without any hands raised, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we will move on to Item E on our agenda. Item E is our consent calendar. We have three items this evening. So for my first question to commissioners is, would a commissioner like to pull any or all of these items? All right, seeing none, then we will take the consent calendar as presented, and I'll ask for a motion in a second. Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I moved to accept the consent calendar and approve these minutes.
All right, we have a motion to approve as submitted. The consent calendar, Commissioner Doe?
Well, second the motion.
All right, we have a second. Any commissioner comment or questions? All right, seeing none in alphabetical order. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Abstain.
Commissioner Tate?
I'm also abstaining.
I will vote yes, so I believe that that passes with three votes in approval and two abstentions. And with that, we will move on to Item F, which is our public hearing this evening. Item F1 is to consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to remove an existing chain-link fence and construct a new fence that would exceed the fence height-location requirements for properties fronting on Santa Cruz Avenue. This is at 1975 Santa Cruz Avenue, the Holy Cross Cemetery, in the R1S, that's our single-family suburban zoning district. New fence would be five and a half, 5.5 feet in height, with column bollard heights of 6.5 feet, and would feature a block base and columns with iron pickets in between. Existing auto-entry gate and columns would remain. And I am super sorry, I do not know which staff person I'm handing off to. Ah, Mr. Turner, welcome this evening. It's all yours.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty and Commissioners. I do have one quick update to give. There's an email sent to us in planning, I believe Corinne forwarded it on earlier this evening. There were comments for all three items, but I'll just focus on the one for this item at the moment. The comment was generally supportive of the fence, noting it would be an improvement, and offered a couple suggestions with the cloth attached to the remaining portion of the chain-link fence to be removed or replaced, and suggestions for the heritage tree replacements. And with that, I will take any questions.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any questions? Do we have a presentation from the applicant, Mr. Turner?
The applicant is here and probably give a few words.
Okay, so before that, any questions of Mr. Turner from the commission? Okay, let's go ahead and turn to the applicant then. Thank you.
Hi, I am Margaret Wimmer. I'm the advocate on behalf of the Holy Cross Catholic Cemetery, and also, I believe Mark Melby, who is also one of the team members, is present in the meeting this evening, and he might also want to add some participate in the presentation, but primarily, what we're trying to do is vastly improve the appearance of that whole street corner, and that chain-link fence is no longer even allowed in the zoning ordinance of the city to have a chain-link fence in front of a property like that. So we've been working diligently over probably the last two years, trying to move through this project and present it to the city and hopefully get it approved. And we base the design of the fence on elements that are already existing on-site. The front automobile gates, the wrought-iron design of those gates is copied into the wrought-iron fence design, and the materials that create the base of the wrought-iron fence and the columns and the bollards are in keeping with another large center area of the cemetery that's using those same materials for monuments and other burial. It's a big burial sort of monument, so we felt like the design was compatible with what's there. It is a big improvement. We're limiting it to the front, the frontage of North Santa Cruz Avenue, and we go around the corner and we end it about 75 feet on one side because the cost of the fence is so high. I think it'd be cost prohibitive to do the entire perimeter, so. But we feel like it's going to be a great improvement to that whole entire corner.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wimmer. Mr. Melby, did you want to say anything at the moment, or? You don't have to, I just wanted to give you the option.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Yeah. No, this has been a great process, and working with the city of Menlo Park has been great, and all of the people at the cemetery with Monica, and then also working with Steve Maury, who's very involved with the cemetery. This project was brought to my attention by my mother and Melby, who just said, you know, you ought to look into this, you know, fixing that up and having it, you know, modernizing it because the fence is, you know, falling down in some areas, and it just, you know, it's a really nice corner. And so I was working with Steve Maury, and then we brought in Margaret, who's been awesome in kind of spearheading this and working with all of the people at the city of Menlo Park. And again, it's been a couple-year process, and we're, you know, kind of crossing all the bridges and checking all the boxes that the city has wanted to do. And they just put that new pathway with a new corner, you know, kind of handicapped or, you know, little walking area. So we think that it's going to be a great addition to that corner. And again, you know, the city has been very diligent with respect to design and trees and everything, so I believe it's been a well-thought-out, well-worked-up plan. And again, I really have to thank Margaret because she's been awesome in the process.
All right, thank you very much. Before we turn to public comment, any questions of either the applicants or staff from the commission? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open public comment. Ms. Beegan?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. As a reminder, you can press the hand icon on your screen or use star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing the Zoom account or phone line with another commenter, please inform staff at the start of the public comment, and your staff will ensure the other commenter speaks right after you've finished your comment. And right now, I do not see any hands raised.
All right, let's go ahead and just give it a minute.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, there are no comments or questions.
All right, then let's go ahead and wait. I think somebody is raising a hand and putting it down. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And then bring it back to the virtual dais for the commission to comment, discuss, or ask questions. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, I would like to ask Mr. Melby if where there is the remaining chain-link fence, whether the suggested removal or replacement of the fabric is being considered, and whether he thinks that's an appropriate action at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Yeah, with respect to the remaining fence that runs down Santa Cruz Avenue, it's just a question of what you want to achieve. Again, if it's a fabric that's like a green fabric that kind of creates a barrier there, it could be, you know, a nice addition. It just will require maintenance. And Margaret, you might want to, you know, add to that because Margaret has really been in charge of the design. I mean, we've all kind of reviewed different things so that we can keep, you know, the design and the look of the pieces that are there. But that additional fence there, we were kind of, if I, Margaret, correct me if I wrong, we were kind of trying to keep it as much as, you know, keep it the same as it was, that the plants and the bushes and everything that are there kind of stay there because it creates its own little natural barrier. But Margaret, you know, I'd love to hear your opinion.
Did you want me to respond to that now? Sorry.
Well, I wonder if you could respond to my question rather than Mr. Melby's question. My question has to do with replacing the fabric, which is something that is done, for example, on tennis courts on a regular basis. It's not a, not the same level of expense as a new fence. So I wonder if you could respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think replacing the fabric could be part of the scope of the work, sure. I don't know if you have a specific suggestion on what this fabric should be. I think currently now, it's just the green, what we call a green outdoor mesh fabric. I know that that whole fence line is, there's a lot of heavy foliage there, so it's hard to see. However, I think that trying to improve the condition of that existing section of the fence that we're leaving is not a bad idea.
Wonderful. I appreciate that very much, and it sounds like the neighbors would appreciate it as well. And then I'll just say, as someone who actually does play tennis on a regular basis, that that green mesh doesn't get easier to get to as time goes by in the presence of bushes. So maybe the sooner you get another 10-year durability in there, the easier it will be. Thank you. Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Before I turn to other commissioner questions, I do want to go back to Ms. Beegan in public comment. Somebody was trying to raise their hand, and it looks like perhaps they have. So I'm going to take the prerogative of momentarily reopening public comments, simply to see if that individual wanted to speak on this topic.
Okay, sure, yeah. I will now introduce Victor B., and I'm sorry, I don't want to butcher your last name, Bothier. And I will go ahead and speak right now. Let me see if I can undo this mic. Sorry about that. Sorry, I'm trying to turn on this mic. Okay, there we go. I think you can speak now, Victor. Sorry, it looks like we're having a little bit of technical difficulties here. Vine, would you be able to help turn on the mic?
His mic is on.
Oh, okay, yeah. It looks like he's having some technical difficulties.
Maybe he needs to unmute the button on the bottom-left corner of his screen.
So Victor would... Okay, it looks like he's now muted.
Then unmute.
It looks like we do have another hand. Perhaps we can go to the second comment while we're trying to figure out the access to the first.
Okay, so now I will introduce Carol Grace. Carol, can you please unmute yourself? And please state your name, jurisdiction, and you'll have three minutes to speak. So Carol, can you unmute yourself, maybe? Okay. So it doesn't look like it's working. Carol, are you able to unmute yourself?
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, great.
I was having trouble figuring out because I don't have the unmute icon at the bottom of the screen.
Okay, sure. Can you please state your name and your jurisdiction, and you have three minutes to speak?
My name is Carol Grace. I'm in District 5. I have a question regarding that chain-link fence that's going to remain. My observation, when I went to look at it, is that there are sections that have no green cloth. There are sections that have green cloth, and there are sections that have green cloth that is falling off. And what I'd like to see as part of this project is that the project manager decide either to replace the green cloth along that entire section of chain-link fence that's going to stay, or remove it along that entire section. I don't really care which you choose, but I think it should be consistent, and that it shouldn't look like it's falling apart. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for sticking with it to be able to get your comment in. Let's go ahead and try again with our first commenter one more time to see if we can make that work.
Hi, Victor. Can you try again with a meeting?
Still not working?
It doesn't look like it's working for him. Can you just start speaking, maybe, Victor, to see if we can't hear you? It's showing. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Can you please state your name and jurisdiction, and you have three minutes to speak?
To be honest with you, I don't know what jurisdiction I am at, but my name is Victor Bothier, and I live right across the cemetery on 1900 Santa Cruz. And I'm just curious, when, and I see the fence now, I mean, I've sent emails to you all, or whoever at the office, to send me pictures of this fence, but never got around to it sending to me until today. But the fence looks nice, but the question I have, and it's a big concern to me, because I live in this corner, it's 210, and every year, more and more trees are being cut down, more and more shrubbery is being removed. And the more you do that, the more visible the cemetery is becoming, and the more that noise level on some days is really a little noisy sometimes. I don't know, you know, because of the... I understand why they're there for, and I appreciate that they're there to be with the loved ones. But sometimes it gets a little loud, and then you see everybody there, you know, multiple, multiple people there. And I was just hoping that the fence, when you were talking about this a couple of years ago, that was going to be more of a wall, to be honest with you. At the front of Santa Cruz Avenue, the main entrance, that fence would look lovely because there's nobody that's really facing the front entrance. But whereas my side of the street, 1900, 1935, and the next-door neighbor after that, we're the ones that have to deal with this day in and day out. And if you guys can remove that fence, put a new one on, we're going to have new shrubs to block all these individuals and cars, and hopefully reduce the noise level that occurs there on weekends. I just think that removing all the trees and shrubs are really going to make it worse for us, it's the neighbors that are living right here in CNC this, you know, day in and day out. And I would like to have that fence be consistent all the way down to on Santa Cruz, not on our north side, but on this side over here on my side. I prefer, like I said, I prefer to have be a wall personally, and maybe some new shrubs along that whole side. But no, that's my only comment on that right now. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking with us in this meeting, for making that all work out to get your comment, and thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the virtual dais. So wait, let me pause. Any other hands from any member of the public, Ms. Beegan, at this point?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, I don't see any more comments or hands raised.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close that second public comment then, and to the commission, thank you for allowing me to do that. Commissioner Riggs, I think the floor was yours, or you may have been done, and let's bring it back to the commission for further discussion.
I was done. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners' questions or comments?
Is the microphone for Mark Melby still on?
It is, Mr. Melby. At the moment, where we are is for public comment, and now for the commission discussion. So if somebody asks a direct question of you, I'll be sure to do that.
I would love to say something to Victor if possible.
It's just technically not the way we're supposed to run the meetings and dialogue, so I hope you can understand that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Vice Chair Harris?
Yeah, just a quick question through the chair to the applicant, if I may. I like that there are a bunch of new plantings that are going to be going in that are going to not require a lot of water, and I'm just wondering, given our discussion around that the fence doesn't look that great because the green screen is kind of falling apart, I'm just wondering what is the maintenance plan for going forward for all these new plantings that you don't currently have?
Yeah, to the applicant, so either one of you who would like to address that.
Sure. So you're talking specifically about where the chain-link is existing and to remain?
No, I'm talking about the entire part. I mean, in front of, on Santa Cruz North, I guess it is. There's a lot of new plantings that you're planning to put in, and I'm just concerned that those are going to get taken care of, maintained.
Well, you know, the original scope of the project was just to address the fence, and by doing that, it triggered having us to do a landscape plan. So originally, to be honest, we weren't really wanting to put any landscape between the sidewalk and the fence because of the maintenance issues, possible maintenance issues. between the sidewalk and the fence because of the maintenance issues, possible maintenance issues and getting irrigation currently, there's no irrigation out there. But it's a requirement of the city. So we're just trying to get this project through and comply with the requirements. We tried to just say we were going to put mulch for most of it and we were just going to put plantings on the two second sections of fence that were closest to the auto gates, thinking that that would be sufficient, but the city didn't like that. They wanted plantings for the entire width. So I agree with you. It will require maintenance. I, we do have a full-time maintenance person, which is great on the grounds at all times and he's very responsive. So he would be the one who would be responsible for keeping any plantings alive. But if you want a more detailed maintenance schedule and what have you, that's something that we do not have at the moment. If we would need to prepare that, then I suppose we could work on that.
Okay, so that explanation makes me a little concerned. So if we're requiring you to put in plantings, but you're not required, but you're not, your plan is not really to do much with them later. I'd rather have no planting than dead plantings. So I, I don't, it's not something that we can make the cemetery folks do, I don't think, but that is a little concerning to me.
Well, we, we plan to comply with the requirement. And the requirement is to have landscaping. We haven't had any comments on the landscaping that we presented. So like this is a comment that we haven't gotten. So we can address it if it's a formal comment, we can address it. I don't think that we would plant things and let them die. I think they would be maintained and we did select plants that are drought resistant.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other commissioner comments or questions or ultimately will need to move toward making a recommendation here? I have a Commissioner Riggs, your hand is, your hand is first.
Well, if you had a comment to make, I'd like to yield to you. It's my intention to make a motion.
If you don't mind, I have a question of staff, which would be helpful to me. Mr. Turner, can you remind me why we have that three foot requirement that we're asking for the variance on here? What's the purpose of that? At that, at that corner triangle?
Typically, the height requirement in the front setback is more of a safety issue. You think of like a typical residential property with cars potentially backing out onto a street. You don't want a full seven foot fence. You know, right next to your, your driveway. So you can't see other cars coming. Same thing with the site triangle with three foot height limit. It's more of a safety issue for being able to see cars coming around the corner or pedestrians.
So that's a, that's a hugely busy intersection with a lot of cars that come down and make that right-hand turn. I'm, I'm interested. The staff recommendation. What was your assessment that that was not a safety concern on that sightline?
So the transportation division reviewed this project. And if you, if you look at the, the map and the intersection, it's a pretty obtuse angle. So there's a pretty, pretty good sightline from Santa Cruz that'd be southbound and then going around the corner. So they, they did review it and did not see any potential issues.
And that was also with, that was consideration with like safe streets and Hillview there and students getting out and all of that was taken into consideration.
Correct. Yeah, the transportation division would have taken that into consideration.
Was there any thought to asking to, the, the way that it's designed is the metal part, which is kind of to look like the existing gate is filled in now, but the existing gate is not, you can see through it. I wondered if there was any consideration for essentially allowing the design to be there, but to still be able to see through the, the metal part of the fence. But that wasn't a consideration. Ultimately, what I hear you saying is that there wasn't a concern about the height, so it didn't matter.
Right. The, I mean, you can still see through the fence. It's like raw iron fencing. So the, the use permit, it's a use permit. I just want to sort of clarify that as well. It's not a variance. The request is for the height, the design of the fence is a little bit more so up to the applicant. But yeah, they again, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Turner. So and just to the applicant, just am I mistaken on that? I thought that actually the, the way that it's designed, can you see through the iron portion of it? On the new fence? It looked like it was not. It looked like it was filled in.
No, it's, you can see through it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if you wanted me to offer some information on that corner section, I'd be happy to, to address.
Absolutely, of course. Yeah, thank you.
So there, there is that 35 feet view angle that's required at an intersection. And we do acknowledge that this is a highly trafficked intersection. Right now, the chain link fence goes directly into the corner. So you know, the new fence would be an improvement on the site conditions on that corner. We couldn't comply to the 35 feet setback of the corner fencing because there are burial sites up into that corner. And a lot of them might not have, you know, gravestone or a landmark that makes them clearly obvious, but we had the, we had the the cemetery, the cemetery groundskeeper create a map that they created a map showing that there is, there are what I call active sites there that people per, they own them. So we couldn't, we can't put it, put a fence through their
Sure.
Through their plot area. So we did have to kind of finesse that corner and push it more towards the corner. However, we are showing as much of a triangular view area as we possibly can offer.
And is the reason for going above the three feet, is that aesthetics or is there some other reason? Like you don't want people jumping the fence or something?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that because it's a, it is a private property and it's, you know, has sensitive, it's a sensitive use. We're basically wanting to manage people just hopping over, you know, kids having parties, people throwing trash. We, it, there needs to be some kind of a boundary or some kind of, something that's signifies that the, there's the public area, the public part of the sidewalk and the streetway. But then this is the cemetery and this is an area that's sacred ground in many ways and should be protected. So it needs, it is, you know, for security intentions, although if anyone can jump over that fence that they can more than do that. But it's just more of a, a boundary and a respectful boundary around the sacred ground there.
Very helpful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commissioner Riggs, thank you. I, I appreciate it. That was, that was what I wanted to learn more about. So over to you.
All right, thank you. Well, I would like to adopt a resolution and approve the use permit to approve the project as presented in the staff report with the additional requirement that suitable fabric be placed on the chain link fence portions, which are not which are to remain. And I will just add that in the many years of using that intersection, I am quite sensitive to the presence of bicycles and pedestrians. I have a distinct history with that, and I've never been uncomfortable with that intersection. So so I'm confident in making the motion.
All right. So Commissioner Riggs has a motion, which is as presented with the additional piece about the fabric on the remaining chain link fence. Any commissioners? Want a second or further discussion? Mr. Tate?
A second.
All right, we have a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Commissioner Tate. Mr. Turner, do you have enough direction from the motion in the second about what that means about fabric on the remaining fence?
I do. I would just want to clarify that that can be reviewed and approved at a staff level or the commission to see that.
Yeah, Commissioner Riggs, is that your intent?
It is indeed. And I apologize for omitting that statement. Thank you.
Commissioner Tate, is that okay with you as a second?
Yes.
All right. All right, we have a first and a second. It's clear to staff. Any commissioner comments or questions before we move to a vote? All right, seeing none, we'll vote. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. Thank you for being here this evening and good luck with the rest of the project and all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will close item F1. And we will now move to item F2. Item F2 is to consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to exceed the maximum nighttime noise limit of 50 DBA decibels measured at residential property lines to accommodate electric pool heating equipment for the approved Menlo Park Community Campus, the MPCC development currently under construction at 100 Terminal Avenue. This is in the PF Public Facilities zoning district. And once again, although I believe Mr. Turner, you're with us a bunch this evening, so am I handing to you?
Yes, you are. Thank you. So as I mentioned before, we received comments on all three items. So this was the same email that was sent earlier. The, the commenter sort of expressed general concerns about the noise from the, from the heat pumps and that it would be somewhat cumulative, cumulative to existing noise from 101. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Turner? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any other presentation before moving to public comment?
We do have the applicant here who's also the city Menlo Park and representatives from Meta. Who could talk a little bit more about the, the reasoning for the heat pumps.
If anybody from that team would like to do so, now, now is your time.
Yeah, I'll speak up. I'm not able to show my video, but I think you all can hear me okay.
We can. Thank you for being with us.
Awesome. Thanks for your time. My name is Cheryl Jarrett. I am a project manager. Start my video. Thanks. My name is Cheryl Jarrett. I'm the project manager for this project, the Menlo Park Community Campus, the, your, your future, future community campus. Working with Meta for a good while now to bring this community campus to life. Just wanted to speak a little bit on this use permit. So there are two pools that are going to not use fossil fuels for heating, but kind of use and reach our sustainable goals by having electrical heating measures. And so those electrical heating measures are going to be accomplished by five air source heat pumps, which will be in operation to heat, to heat the pool. There were several studies that were done by Salter, the acoustician, who we actually have Skylar and Ethan on the line here way back when to research all forms and the best and find solutions for the best way to build a plant system that is the most efficient and quiet solution available to heat these pools. So this use permit is to allow for that noise limit to be exceeded. It is shown to be around 50 and may exceed the daytime limit of 60 decibels. But however, as Chris Turner mentioned, this will be below the nearby sounds of adjacent 101. So that's kind of the gist of the proposal and what has been submitted for the use permit.
Great, thank you very much. Any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Ms. Doe?
Actually, thank you Chair. Actually, I did for Mr. Jarrett. Did you say it would, it would exceed 60 or exceed 50?
Apologies, exceed 50, not exceed 60.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. That was my question too. Terrific. Any other questions before public comment? All right, let's go ahead and open public comment. Ms. Vegan, take us away.
All right, thank you Chair DeCarty. As a reminder, you can press the hand icon on your screen or star nine from your keyboard on your phone for those calling in tonight. Any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting can inform staff ahead of time so that we can ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. So it looks like we have a commenter, Pam D. Jones, and I will unmute her. Hi Pam. You, you have, please state your political affiliation and you have three minutes to speak. Oh, and state your name, I'm sorry.
You never want to give me 30 minutes to speak. Pam Jones here, resident of Belle Haven neighborhood in Menlo Park and Chair DeCarly, Vice Chair Harris, Commissioners and staff. Thank you for bringing this. But the last piece for the pool at our new Belle Haven Community Campus. I do have a concern about this heat pump and the amount of noise. There are 14 residents because some of those buildings are duplexes, but duplexes and single family homes. And then across the street, there's the front part of the apartments will all be affected. Freeway noise at night is, is generally not that bad. More like a little white noise because there's times that we can hear the freeway where I live. But to have this heat pump would be disturbing. And the other thing is that I noticed is that there's no comparison of any options, any gas-free options. And if there is no gas-free options that we can look at, that would be less intrusive on, on the residents, then that we need to build, put it, build a container around it that will dampen the sound. But think in terms of, would you like to be living this close to something that's going to have an unusual noise? And especially since we don't know whether there's any other options. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any other public comment?
Okay. Chair DeCarty, I can confirm that there are no public comments anymore. Oops, sorry. That was too early. Looks like Carol Grace would like to speak. So let me unmute her. Okay. All right. So thank you, Carol Grace. Please state your name and political jurisdiction and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Carol Grace. I live in District Five. I've actually lived in Menlo Park for well over 40 years now and have lived close to 101. I've lived close to the Caltrains train station. And I've lived across the street from USGS. And I'd just like to say the city has not been very good about noise ordinances. And the current decibel levels, while they seem reasonable, really don't work very well, especially at nighttime with mechanical noises. Something that may be pretty much unnoticed during the day is very noticeable at night. And I think these heat pumps, my understanding, reading about them is when they first come on, the first few minutes, they're particularly And I think these heat pumps, my understanding, reading about them is when they first come on, the first few minutes, they're particularly noisy. And I could tell you from owning a heat pump water heater, even at 33 decibels, it's an annoying noise. And I would not want to be living anywhere near this and have this inflicted on me every night so that people can swim early in the morning. I think there are other solutions you can come up with. And I strongly recommend that you that you do so, that you come up with something that's quiet. I mean, you could have electric pumps that that don't have the heat pump. It's going to use more energy. But it would be quiet. And I think that the people living nearby really deserve to have that quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. Any other public comments at this time?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, I do not see any more comments, any more hands raised.
All right, with that, we will go ahead and close public comment. And then bring it back to the virtual dais for commissioners, questions, comments, and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? Ms. Tate?
So I definitely do agree with both of the public commenters. And it's really interesting because sitting here while we're just starting to hear this, my neighbors' air conditioner heater system just popped on and my windows are closed and I can hear it. But like in the at night, I can't have my window open in my bedroom because I can hear their their pump all night long, their fan. So and I'm I think I'm probably the only person household that's impacted by them because of where it's located. But just imagine all the families that'll be impacted by this project and the pump. And I definitely think that evaluating something else would be great for the community because it really is an annoyance for me. And this is just something that's a household. It's not an industrial system. So yes, the freeway, we can hear it here. I can hear the freeway where I live. But as Ms. Jones stated, at night, I cannot hear it. So and and again, we don't have any other options to evaluate, like there aren't any other listed in the report. So I'm not sure what else can be done to try to mitigate this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. Vice Chair Harris?
Yeah, I would agree with the callers, and I'd like to thank both of them for taking the time to call in. And with Ms. Tate, I think it's really true that at night sounds are so much louder because everyone is quiet and asleep. And so I don't I don't feel comfortable with 60 decibels or over 50 at night on a sort of consistent-ish basis. So I would recommend that the the applicant go back and try to look at maybe some other options that haven't been looked at before, or, you know, double down on some of the ones that you have looked at. I don't think I feel comfortable with the noise level at that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Other Commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Tate?
I do have one other question, and that is probably for staff through the chair. So I understand, you know, from reading this, this is the direction that the city wants to go and to reach our goals. So Burgess, when will that one be updated? And will will something like this be considered in that in that particular setting? Because I'm sure the neighbors there would like have all been at the meeting to protest something like this. And and you know, we understand that that is an issue with Bellhaven and other underserved areas where the residents don't generally participate in public meetings. So if this gets by without us looking at other options, it really is shame on us to some degree to allow that to happen because we know that the city, the residents don't generally participate in public meetings to protest something like this that will impact them every night, 365 days from now on. And I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Was that a that was a question of staff, right, Commissioner Tate?
Question to staff was, when will Burgess be updated? Since that is is one of our goals, are they going to be updated soon? And if a system such as this is being considered for that location, that would have the same noise decimals at night.
So I guess I'll answer the first question as best I can. I know that the Sustainability Division is looking into how to electrify Burgess Park. I don't know off top of my head where exactly they are. In that process, I know they are looking at similar heat pumps. It's a ways off from my understanding, but I couldn't give you a specific timeframe at the moment to address sort of the other options that have been looked at. I may defer to Cheryl. If that's okay, she and the Meta team and Salter have done a pretty extensive review of some options. And they've been sort of due to the location, it's right next to the property line with the PG&E substation. It makes it really difficult to to fit noise dampening measures in there. But again, I think Cheryl would probably have have more information on that. Yes, can I speak or?
Commissioner Tate, is that okay to have your question also go to Ms. Jarrett?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Wanted to address, guess, Commissioner Tate and some of the other comments on the noise mitigation explorations that have been explored during this study. So there were a few things that were looked at. One was some acoustic silencers. And those unfortunately could not be added to the air source heat pumps due to limited space that is available at that south side of the project. These air source heat pumps also require greater than six feet of free airflow on all sides of them. So that is why that there is a chain link fence that will be separating. That's the proposal. Separating the air source heat pumps from the neighbors and not some sort of intense sound wall. There's just not the space there and the functionality is not possible. There the amount of free airflow would not be provided for these air source heat pumps to operate. Also, the runtimes of these air source heat pumps would be dependent on the operation of the pool. Most likely, it would only be only occur in the winter and really dependent on kind of pool operation times, ambient temperatures at nights, the pool cover and how effective that is. So there's a lot of defense dependencies and a lot of I think variances that are not able to be fully flushed out until the pool operation measures by the city are evaluated. Also, just wanted to note that there is another system that's available that we are utilizing on this project to heat the pool, and that's through solar water heating. So that system is at the solar array portion of the project over in the parking area. So there's solar water heating that is like kind of running through solar tubes that will reach this pool area and will kind of add to that extra heating measure, which will reduce their source heat pump runtime and reduce the amount of work that those air source heat pumps will have to do. And those are kind of the 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 big items in the in the mitigation measures that have been explored and are being used on this project. So I just wanted to highlight those. I know I did not in the in the intro, and I think those are definitely important to note. Wanted to, if I could, ask Ethan with Salter if there's anything that I missed. Salter is the acoustical consultant on this project who did all of these studies at the time and put all this effort into finding the most efficient air source heat pump product on the market. It just wanted to also know if we had smaller heat pumps. That means that there would be more of them, which would make the heat pumps louder. So I think the team did a really good job of finding the best solution for this project. Ethan, I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to add.
Or Skylar? Or Skylar? Skylar here. Yeah, I'm not sure if Ethan was. Ethan, are you here? I'm not sure if you were able to speak.
He's in the he's in the attendees, which we
Yeah, so we switch him over.
Which we can do, so.
No, sorry, sorry. That's my apologies. I meant to call on Skylar, so sorry about that.
Yeah, I'd like to defer to Ethan if we can get him in. You guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. And it looks like he's coming in right now.
Join his panelist.
We can hear you, Mr. Salter. Excuse me, yeah. Oops, we couldn't. I apologize.
Hi, this is Ethan Salter. Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Great. It's nice to meet everybody tonight. I think Cheryl summarized the efforts we undertook over the past year or so very nicely. We looked at evaluating the numbers of machines, the hours of operations for these machines. So and also the efficacy of enclosing them in behind some sort of solid barrier. And as she described, these machines need a lot of air movement around them. So these mitigation strategies, in addition to the silencers which were mentioned, were all deemed to be not effective for one reason or another. So I think that's all I would have to add to this point. The audibility of the machines as compared to the freeway that was brought up earlier. I think that you're correct. Different noise sources have different characters, so the freeway is something that's relatively constant. That's why we compared it compared to the air source heat pumps to the freeway since it is something that's relatively universally understood.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Tate, any other questions or follow up?
Yes. So what has been the feedback that you've received from the neighbors who would be impacted by this? My assumption is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you have reached out to them and that they were even aware of this meeting tonight? That's a question to.
To Cheryl. Awesome. Yeah, I can answer that. There was a letter sent to the residents in the Bellhaven neighborhood giving them providing the same information that we're talking about. I don't think it was as in-depth as we're going into right now, but there was a letter that was distributed to the neighborhood notifying them of what these air source heat pumps are and what type of noise levels they would be hearing in the future.
Okay, so so Meta or staff has not sent did not send out anything alerting the neighbors that this would be on an agenda item tonight to discuss this that would impact them so adversely. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding here?
I can't speak to that. Sorry, I guess.
Right.
This might have to. Apologies. Right through the chair, if I can answer that. So they the the neighbors would have been sent our standard meeting notice that goes out for for every public hearing item. There's a 300 foot radius around the the property, which actually extends leap to the other side of 101. So they would have been notified of tonight's meeting.
Okay, and I I guess that goes back to my point previously about people in neighborhoods such as this don't generally attend public meetings and and will be surprised when they start hearing the noise. But thank you for your effort. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Harris?
Yeah, thanks. I I went back to my notes and I realized I had one other question. But I do I do appreciate, I want to take a moment to appreciate that we're trying to get away from fossil fuels. So now we've, you know, now we've got this other problem that we need to solve. So my question is, are there, and this would be to staff, are there other similar situations in Menlo Park where we have a heat pump or a, I don't know, air conditioner or something that exceeds our noise level at night in other areas in Menlo Park? On public facilities?
Off the top for public facilities, off the top of my head, I can't think of any at the moment. We'd probably have to do some research into whole planning files to try and figure that out. I don't believe there are, but I don't have.
Okay, so so we may not have any examples of what it what is what it is like to live next to something that's louder at night than what is what is allowed. Perhaps. Okay. All right, thanks.
Anything else, Commissioner? Okay, Harris, yes. Commissioner Doe?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I was just going to piggyback off of what Vice Chair Harris was saying. 50 decibels, 60 decibels. I know that I can look it up online and it's like it's the sound of a conversation or it's the sound of a dishwasher. But is it is there any way to mock up the noise? Are there, you know, machines where you can, you know, play that level of noise and, you know, beforehand, go door to door to every new the neighbors on that street as, you know, labor intensive as that is and just be like, hey, we're, you know, before we installing this noise permanently? Because I know for me, I I may read what 50 or 60 is, but until I experience it, I feel like it's hard to know what that actually feels like.
That's certainly a good question. Ethan, have we mocked up anything? I'm going to defer to you on this one.
No, not for this project. There's been no mockups. But my company does have have has done in the past sort of what you're talking about where we've used loudspeakers to broadcast a calibrated sound recording. So you record your sound source and you know it's a certain sound level at a certain distance. And then you get a set of loudspeakers that is large enough to simulate somewhat the size of the sound source. So you don't want to, you know, play heat pump noise out of the speaker on your phone. You want something like a big, relatively big set of loudspeakers. And then you broadcast it back at that calibrated sound level. And my company and other companies like mine have done demonstrations like that of the the kind that you've noted here a couple of minutes ago for construction projects or train projects, kind of speaking generally here, but but it has been done and it's a careful process because you don't want to this isn't virtual reality, but we want to simulate reality as much as potentially it could be predicted in the future based on calculations that my firm or others would be making.
Well, thank you. I mean, I know that if I were living there, I would find that helpful, and I don't know if that's the same for others. And if I understand this. And if I understand the, the report correctly, it sounded like the solar source heat pumps are actually the main source of heat.
Yes.
Not these air source. So is there any way where there could be like a guarantee, like these air source heat pumps won't turn on until 6:00 AM? You know, like from 10 to 6:00 there, you know, I don't know if that's possible, but just if there was some way for residents to be like, I can sleep at night.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, really good question, and we've thought about that. And I think that goes into how the pool wants to be operated by the city. But it's also going to depend on the temperature of the air, right? Like I mentioned, I think the pool cover, like how efficient that is is a few factors that will play into what the runtimes actually are. And I, I think that your idea of some type of simulation or mockup is, is not a bad one at all. I just, I'm a little hesitant because I think it'll vary depending on the season and the, and the time of day that the pool is used for how long. I don't think, and Ethan, correct me if I'm wrong, like it's not going to be consistently used every day. It's not like every single night it's going to be running. It might be intermittent, it might be reduced hours. And so I think once the building is open, there'll be a better picture of that, but that is some type of, I think that we can work towards a plan to communicate something more clearly to the residents.
Thank you.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. My questions keep growing. I've got maybe half a dozen questions. So I'm going to start through the chair if I I could ask Ms. Jarrett, what temperature do we keep a swimming pool?
80 for the lap pool and 84 for the instructional pool.
So the reason I ask that question is that the average temperature on a Menlo Park summer day may be barely above 70. And that's in the summer. And I can't even make a wild guess at how many gallons of water is in a public swimming pool, but it takes a very long time, as I recall, to change the temperature of a pool even by like three degrees. So if the pool is in use in November, which I'm sure is intended, or for that matter in March, the heater is not only running at night, it's running in the daytime as well. It, it, it just needs heat all the time. And certainly the solar system is not doing anything in particular after 5:00 PM. Or actually probably earlier than that after October. So I think we sort of have to figure, you know, absent calculations and a presentation that this heating system is there for a reason. It's because the solar can't really keep the pool warm enough. If it were to be 80 to 83 degrees, say by 10 o'clock in the morning, the solar system would have to probably heat it to 86 or 87 by closing time. That's just my guess. So I guess, starting from the beginning, I found the comments from Ms. Grace to be quite compelling and the, and the comments from Ms. Jones as well. To be honest, that was my initial reaction when I read this item. And particularly, I will repeat the comment that the sound of a heat pump is considerably different from the sound of a freeway. So comparing 50 decibels of one to 50 decibels to the other is just not relevant. I mean, I, I had the good fortune to spend two evenings sleeping in a house in Malibu out on piers over the surf. And that's probably 70 decibels. It is just crashing. But after you've listened to about 45 minutes, it is the sea and you fall asleep. I don't think it works that way with a heat pump. And I, I recall more than one person observing to me that when they hear the sound of tires on a freeway, it's actually rather similar to the sound of the ocean or the sound of the wind through leaves. Again, that's just not a heat pump. So we really, I have often felt that the 50 decibel limit at night in Menlo Park is a generous limit. One of the reasons it's there, I think, is because our major tax base until 15 years ago was our industrial section. And right next to my neighborhood, probably no more than a few hundred feet from my neighborhood is a company which, when it had a lot of orders and manufacturer would run all night and they had a huge ventilating fan. And you could not miss that thing pretty much anywhere in the neighborhood. And that was a fan, which is at least a steady noise. So I really don't see how in good conscience we could approve 50 decibels plus in a residential neighborhood. Not this kind of noise. So just, just reference, I also did look up on the website because I've heard anecdotally, including from Mr. Salter's firm over the many years, what 50 decibels amounts to. And yeah, that's just a quiet conversation, not much different from what we're having here tonight. Although of course you would get up and close the door if somebody were sleeping next to you. It's recommended that for sleep or study, 40 decibels is a better target. And if I understand the decibel meter, so to speak, that would be about one tenth of the noise of 50 decibels. So we, we really do have a neighborhood problem. I would not want Terminal Avenue residents anymore than Lorelei Lane residents to be told that they have to keep their windows closed in order to sleep. A lot of us keep our bedroom windows open 11 and a half months a year. So I think from this point, we have to say, okay, what can we do to moderate the noise? I have not studied the site plan, so I can't say what alternatives there might be for locating the heat pumps. I can't say whether even a pocket in the building needs to be, needs to be cut because this is a, this is a key element to the building program. I also don't know whether the requirement for full airflow at four sides, six feet clear is the kind of recommendation that an agency or a manufacturer publishes when in fact having two sides open and the other two sides partially open actually functions very well. I can't ask that. I can't know that. I do sort of suspect there's a question. One might also ask if one side were three feet rather than six feet, how much would that reduce the efficiency of the unit? Would it be 50%? Would it be 5%? And then finally, in just in terms of enclosures in general, they are very effective. I'm pleased to say that I was tasked with doing a generator enclosure for a expansion of a clinic building up near Portland. The building was directly across the street from residences. And they were very much concerned about this new generator, which supposedly was only going to run for testing, but of course runs whenever a storm takes out the power. So we designed an enclosure that was, as I recall, no more than three and a half feet larger than the generator pad itself on each side. And when we did the test run, the neighbors all stayed at home and opened their windows. And they impatiently called the next day asking why we didn't do the test run. So we know that it is possible with an enclosure. And as I recall, the Salter firm actually reviewed the design for us. Ethan, this would have been about 1998 or 1999. Distant, distant history. So I would just, I, I wish I could be more constructive, but I think this needs to go back to the drawing board before we can approve this kind of heat pump system in a Menlo Park residential neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I have a couple of questions, but I want to make sure, are there any other commissioners that would like to follow on Commissioner Riggs? So just a couple of clarifying questions. So Mr. Turner, if so the decibel level limit is 60 during the day and it's 50 at night. And so if if in fact the proposal here was to meet those levels, we would not be having this conversation. Is that correct? You would have approved it at the staff level?
Correct. We do this all the time with like residential air conditioning units, heat pumps. If they comply with the, the maximum noise limits, it's just approved via building permit, right?
Can you remind me what it is? What's the maximum level during the day and at night for a residential air conditioning or heat pump unit or in our neighborhoods? And is that applied the same across the entire city?
It's the same. It's 60 at night, 50 at night, 60 during the day. We apply that it's measured at the residential, nearest residential property line. So if there are, say, ground mounted mechanical equipment in a commercial zone, even if it's louder than, say, 60 decibels right next door, as long as it meets that, those limits at residential properties further away, it's deemed okay. But yes, it's, it's across the city.
I appreciate that. I don't know if you all can hear, but I have a very unhappy puppy in our house right now and the decibel level is extraordinary. So which is neither here nor there, but it's, it's impacting me. So, and if you can't hear it, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Turner. And, and then Ms. Jarrett, thank you for, for answering all of these questions. Really appreciate it. Do you know what the, so if the alternative was a natural gas heat pump for the, for the pool, do you know what the decibel level for those are? Was that something that in, or do you not just simply because that was never under consideration in this project?
I'd have to defer to Ethan and Skylar with Salter for the decibel level.
In our understanding, the air source heat pump was the main consideration from very early on for the pool conditioning scheme. There, it, it was impressed upon us the environmental intents of the project, fossil fuel reduction, as was mentioned earlier. So that was a primary consideration from a mechanical standpoint. And then we went to work from there.
Okay. That's helpful. I understand just from cursory research that a natural gas heat pump is about the same level. So I was curious. What I don't know is the capacity given site constraints to be able to actually do what many, including Commissioner Riggs, just asked, which was to be able to enclose it in that mix. And then Ms. Jarrett, this may not be for you either, but it is a little puzzling to me that this is coming up now. And there could have been a way to design the layout of the site and where these heat pumps were originally, that could have created space to help baffle or buffer the noise. Do you, can you give some insight? Was that just an oversight or an assumption that this was not going to be an issue?
No, it was not oversight. Actually, a lot of effort was put into where these air source heat pumps are, even though I'm, I'm hearing obviously a lot of questions about it. There was a study done to have them away from the property lines, so further north, further from the pools, but that would not work functionally. There, there would not be a way to source the pools to heat them very well from that distance. There would have to be really inadequate, inefficient lines connecting the two. It would just be way too long of a path. So unfortunately, they have to remain in the area adjacent to the pool where they are. The reason why there is not that much space to build some type of sound attenuation wall and why chain link is more necessary is because of just property residential lines that are there, as well as I already mentioned, the space that the actual air source heat pumps needs to breathe on all sides. From the research done by Meta and Salter, what we know is that more than six feet is necessary from, for airflow on all, on all sides, not just one or two. So there was a lot of attention put into where these air source heat pumps are supposed to be. And as Ethan Salter had mentioned, this is a LEED Platinum project. And so there is a lot of sustainability intention and aspects that need to be met here to meet the city's needs for that LEED Platinum project.
I appreciate that. And then I think my last question for you, as you've mentioned, I think a couple of times about, I think what you've referred to as the pool operations plan and that that would need to be finalized to know exactly how this would all play out down the road. Do I, do I have that right? That, and I, so, and the reason I ask that is are, wouldn't it be helpful to actually have the pool operations plan in place now to know whether you actually need to ask for the increased decibel level potentially in the early hours of the morning or during nighttime? You know, you, for example, you talked about the, the cover, the pool cover. And if there are different insulation values and that that becomes material, would that be a way to address this? You mentioned about use. I, I, I don't know. I, I do know from personal experience that one of the heaviest use times at Burgess Pool is actually when it is dark and nearly the middle of the night when they first open. That's when a lot of people end up going. So I could imagine actually there'd be a lot of interest in use, which means that you would probably have to look at having it heated and ready to go in that early hours. So I guess my question is, wouldn't it make sense to actually get the pool operations plan together? See if in that there are ways to mitigate the need before asking for the ability to go over on that decibel level?
I think that that plan can coincide with this effort is, is my thinking. I think the use permit, right, is for what has been seen, what the calculations are kind of running, like what the decibels will be. And we are seeing that the decibels will be above what is appropriate. And so I think that there still is value in this use permit. In terms of the actual plan and how the pool is operated, I was more so referring to, I guess, that plan evolving and changing throughout the duration of the campus and what the end user, the city of Menlo Park, what you all would do on a day-to-day basis might change. It might differ from the assumptions that we made. So apologies if that was unclear. And then the pool cover, you're right. They, the properties can be known, the properties are known now. But I think just depending on the temperature of the day, I think we all know the average temperature in, in Menlo Park in the neighborhood. But just depending on when the day heats up, how it heats up, I think that pool cover could operate a little differently and does, and cannot be truly defined at this moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. So apologies in advance. I'm not. I'm not. A heating professional, let alone a pool professional, in fact, the one. Pool remodel project I was offered four years ago, I astutely avoided. I, I do want to, though, push back a little bit on the. Issue of adjacency of the heat pump to the pool. I have either worked on or gone to school on. More than one campus that had central heating. And so we're talking fifty to a hundred acres. Where most of the buildings are served by underground piping from the. Central source. So the idea that we can't go a few hundred feet underground. With insulated piping without losing horrendous amount of energy. I'm not quite ready to buy that just on the surface of things. I think it may be that in the effort to. Optimize, as one does trying to reach lead platinum, trying to optimize every element of. A system that. We, so to speak, we assume that the roof of the car has to be painted white because if it's painted black, there'll be too much heat gain. So. I would just like to ask that that be reexamined or suggest that that be reexamined. Because if these units can be put out, again, I'm not looking at the site plan, but even in the parking lot. Where they can have a lot more than six feet around them. And possibly even be closer to the solar array. That. This could solve more than one problem. So that's, anyway, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Any other commissioner comments, or would somebody like to make a motion? Commissioner Riggs?
Well, let me ask through the chair, I guess I would. I would be asking Chris, would it serve? Would it serve the project? If this commission approved the project subject to the fact that the. Noise from the. Pool heater. Meet the city requirements?
I think that may be a little bit. I don't want to say counterproductive, but unnecessary if the. If the pool met the city requirements, it wouldn't need a use permit. So I don't know if that's. Approving the use permit subject to complying with the fifty percent or fifty decibel limit. A little bit counterproductive.
This is the kind of reason why I ask staff before I make a motion. All right. In that case. Seeing that there appear to be. At least a couple of. Approaches that could bring this into code, maybe three, none of them ideal. I'd like to move denial of the use permit. For the project as presented.
All right, we have a first from Commissioner Riggs to deny the request for the use permit. I see Karina Sammeyer, you've come on. Would you like to? Have the floor?
Yes, thank you. So for the denial, we would need to change the. The finding in the resolution, of course, so it would need to be specific. For example. Let's see. So the finding. Talks about the use would not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Of the persons residing in the neighborhood of such proposed use. So I think. The motion should include that it would be detrimental to one of those. Items, if that's, if that's the reasoning.
Thank you. It's a testament to both staff and the commission that denying a use permit is not something we've done for quite a while. So I had forgotten that wording. So I appreciate exactly that, that. In denying it, it would be that we cannot make the finding. That is, it is not harmful.
So Commissioner Riggs, with that, does that? Work for you, Ms. Sammeyer, for the motion? Or do you need more specificity?
No, just to clarify, yeah, I think we need a little more specificity. So is it that the noise from the generator would be harmful to persons residing in the neighborhood?
Yeah, the, the noise from the heat pump. Would be, there was. Another adverb in there besides harmful. I don't remember which seemed more.
Okay, so I think it's, yeah, it's detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare.
So in my opinion, would be detrimental to the health and comfort.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe other commissioners who would want to clarify that, certainly open to that.
All right, but as stated, to deny based on detrimental to the health and comfort of residents of the community. Vice Chair Harris.
Yeah, I just have a process question. So if, do we need to have a motion to deny and pass that motion, or do we just? Do we need to do nothing? Because if it doesn't pass, then. The next step would, I guess, go back to try to fix it so that it did come in to. You know, it did meet the decibel levels required.
Mr. Turner, is that for you?
Ethan, one of you that can answer that question? It might be a tag team effort here. So. You would need to act if there's a motion in a second, you would need to act on the motion. You, if there is no second, there could be a separate motion, perhaps to continue the item. If I, I might defer to Karina if there is. No motion at all that receives a second or passes. Not sure what happens there. Freddie Karina.
Yes, up there. So I think. The procedure would be to continue. So Commissioner Riggs first, and then to see if there's a second and then vote on that. If that fails, then a separate motion could be made.
Okay, but a motion needs to be made in order to deny it.
Yes, so, yes, so.
Versus if we.
At this point.
Okay, well, in that case, then I would like to second. The motion by Commissioner Riggs to deny the permit using the words that he used.
All right. So we have a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Vice Chair Harris. Commissioner Riggs, you raised your hand. Do you have a clarifying question or comment?
Well, I just wanted to comment that. A reason not to continue the project. Would be, as Mr. Turner pointed out. If the. Heat pump conforms to the noise ordinance, then the planning commissioner is really no longer involved and no longer necessary to make a comment. So. That's why it seemed that, that the simple denial would just remove us from the process.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I have a clarifying question for staff. So we have a motion to deny. If we deny, the applicant can appeal to the city council. Or the applicant can do what? Is that the, that is, in fact, what, what they can do?
Yes, there's the standard fifteen day appeal period applies, so the applicant could appeal the project to city council. If there is no appeal. The action is effectively final. The applicants would not be able to come back with a substantially similar project for. Probably twelve months.
Okay. And then let me ask if we were to continue this item, or if there was a motion to continue this item. With direction to the applicant to do things like. Conduct a noise study, to conduct direct outreach to neighbors, to bring them in. To come back with greater detail about the feasibility for baffling. To come back with greater information about how much energy use is wasted, for how long you send it under pipes underground, et cetera. What would happen with a motion like that? And. So I guess that's just the question.
Right. So motion to continue. Obviously, the direction is, is great. We, you could continue the item with, with the direction to, you know, do those studies. At a later time when, when the applicant has done the studies, complied with your direction as best as possible. We would bring it back to the planning commission. The staff report would address, would talk about how the applicant had addressed your direction in the continuation. But it would come back to planning commission for a, for an action, whether that's approval, denial.
And so if we deny. And the city council concurs. Does this functionally essentially delay the opportunity for the community center pool to be. Available for the public by a year at least? Does that functionally what happens?
I think it depends. Obviously, if there's a way to. Figure out how to make the noise come into compliance, there's not an issue. If. The, the heat pumps are installed and operate. And they don't meet the noise ordinance, then the city is effectively. Operating out of compliance with its own. Municipal code. I don't know what effect it would have on the timing as far as. You know, how. How close we are to completion of the pools and when we would need to start operating, then that might be a better question. For Cheryl.
All right, I'll direct that to Ms. Jarrett, if you have any insight.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I believe it would delay the opening of the. Campus. Currently, there's no other feasible way to design the heating of the school. Other than through these air source heat pumps and through the solar heating that I was mentioning before. So. There would definitely have to be a, kind of go back to the drawing board and understand what's, what's going on there. But I believe that. There really wouldn't be any other solutions. I think we could definitely demonstrate. How this is the best solution, better. I think that was maybe what you were positing at the beginning by. Showing some calculations, really sharpening the pencil. But yeah, if the motion is denied, or I don't know the verbiage, then it would definitely delay the opening of the project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah. I am very concerned at this point. About the effect that. The chair asked, I think, a very important question, which is, can this project? Come back if it's denied? And what I heard Mr. Turner say was that the project could not come back in the same form for a year. But then I also heard you say that if it conformed to the fifty decibel limit at night. That it wouldn't need to come back. So let me just ask, you know, maybe it's just a bureaucratic technicality, but. Would denial prevent the project from coming back? As a conforming project? Or can the project still come back as a conforming project, even though it's been denied? For a use permit for a non-conforming element? This, this is a key question.
Yeah, through the chair, the. The reason the project is here is because of the noise exceedance. So without that, it doesn't need to. Go through planning commission. So there would be no need for it to come back. If it adheres, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That, that is reassuring. I'm a little disappointed. To hear from the project manager that. The applicant feels there is no other conceivable way to move this project forward, other than with an air source heat pump. I certainly hope there is. More thinking on a Tuesday morning. But in any case, I'm. I'm relieved with the sanded and minus answer, so. So thank you.
Commissioner Tate?
I, I feel that I like the, the answer we got when Chair DeCarty inquired about continuing this. So that the other options could be studied. Instead of, of. That if it just goes into, to conforms at the fifty decimals that where it's okay. I think that we should definitely, they should definitely explore the other options with enclosing it and having the pumps. The, the wires underground. So I'm not sure if that's something that we could consider doing. Putting together a motion to do that as opposed to the denial route to make it conform. I'm sorry, I kind of got that a little twisted there, but.
No, it's all good.
It's, it's concerning to me, especially when I heard Mr. Turner say that for residential. As long as they're within the appropriate maximum for a night, it's okay when I'm dealing with what I'm dealing with here. So I still feel for the people that will be living in that community and adjacent because. Because I'm dealing with it firsthand. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. I think just to your question on process, Commissioner Tate, we have a first and a second, so. We're now doing any clarifying questions on the motion on the table. We will.
Actually, no one seconded this, I don't believe.
I believe Vice Chair Harris seconded the motion with.
Okay, I thought you just asked a question, sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll stop and with your indulgence, Commissioner Riggs, go back to Commissioner Harris, just to confirm the second on the original motion here. With the language suggested by Commissioner Riggs. Do I have that memory after?
I did second it, and I would, though, like to change and withdraw the second now that I hear. That the project could be delayed by a year versus doing a continuance where we could explore some of these other options. So I would like to withdraw my second if that's a possible thing to do.
I will just double check with Ms. Sammeyer on that. Or Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I, I believe that's possible.
All right, so we have a first on the table from Commissioner Riggs. We would be, so this is now the process question, Commissioner Tate. So. We could either get a second for Commissioner Riggs, and then we would move to a vote, or Commissioner would be free to. Make an alternative suggestion for a motion, functionally tabling the first one. Those would be the routes available to us right now. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, for the same reasons that Commissioner Tate has concerns, I'd like to withdraw my motion. And uh if it's appropriate, I would uh like to replace it with a motion to continue. With the purpose of investigating. An alternative source for the heat pump or. Uh or an acoustic enclosure. Or an alternative heat source.
So in requesting the continuance, I'm going to go to Ms. Sam Meyer, is that enough direction for why the continuance or do you need or Mr. Turner, do you need more? Specificity or or anything on clarity from Commissioner Riggs?
Um if I could just have you repeat, I got um. The direction to. Uh to look at alternative sources for the equipment itself, um alternatives for enclosures. And alternatives for the location of the equipment, did I miss anything?
Uh yes, uh um alternative. For an enclosure. For location. Or for an alternative to the air source heat pump.
All right, so we have a first on the table for continuing this item with requests for greater information on those three. Topic areas. Any further commissioner questions or comments or a second or an alternate motion? To Commissioner Riggs, I'd be prepared to support that motion if you would consider adding. What I'm searching for is um. More proactive and engaged outreach to neighbors. Per the comments that Commissioner Tate has made this evening. Uh in order to get their feedback. Uh including some mechanism to be able to actually hear what the sound would be like. Um based on Mr. Salter's discussion about how to run that type of experiment. Um if you'd be willing to add those two elements to the three, then I would be willing to make a second.
I'd be willing uh and and happy to add that um element to the other three. And I will also throw out there, because the project manager is present. That you might want to get an estimate. Of consulting costs. To do that mockup. And compare it with the possibility of. Actually obtaining the piece of equipment. And running it. Uh and letting people listen to it. Uh but I'm throwing that out separate from.
All right, so that is that is Commissioner Riggs's first, and I will with that modification, um I will be glad to second that. Um are there questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Doe.
Oh, sorry, just one last one, I agree with Commissioner Riggs and Chair DeCarty, the um. Conditions you have proposed, but I just want to say I appreciate the fossil-free operation, so I just wanted to clarify that alternative. Heat sources would. Not include fossil fuels, that's not an um, I just wanted to make sure that they stay with the. Platinum and all the sustainability, maybe that's obvious, but I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
That was my intent, Commissioner Doe, so Commissioner Riggs.
Uh I think that's fine, and it it. It's a signal, but I think one that our city stands behind, so yes.
Commissioner Tate.
Um I feel that that's a direction uh definitely that we need to go in, but for me, the um the. Uh objective is so that my neighbors can sleep at night. So whatever um has the the lowest noise and hopefully it will um not have the emissions. But I would, um I'm not sure how comfortable I feel with having that limitation. Uh and one other thing, the testing um. That uh Commissioner Riggs uh suggested, excuse me, which is not part of the motion. Um hopefully, it would be uh with. Enough of the the pumps that people would really get the gist of what it's going to be realistically instead of just one, you know. One unit, because that definitely would be a false thumbs up, I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, other commissioners, questions or comments?
Um to to the chair, if I may. Rather than ruling out uh a fossil fuel system. Since we know that the city, both at the staff level and the. Council level. Are determined not to use fossil fuel. For any portion of this project. Then I think uh. Having a comparison to what, say, uh a natural gas heater. Uh would do serves as information. Whereas it does not serve as a risk. For our personal views, for example, that that would actually be selected, it would only be information. So. If you're open to. Having it for information only, which is essentially the only way it would come forward in this structure.
Yeah, the way I would say that is. I am fine if it is helpful in understanding the noise implications. To have information about what all alternatives look like or are utilized, including those of fossil fuels. I'm not okay with it under the first item you suggested, which was looking at alternate um sources, so. So as long as we're clear on that, then I'd be fine maintaining my second, but if. But if it was to have that under exploration as alternate sources for the energy, then I would not.
Yeah, I think that's a good clarification, it would be uh. As comparative information only.
Okay, that would be fine with me. So for right now, we have a first and a second. That are as Commissioner Riggs's original three, which is alternate sources. Alternate sighting. Or mechanisms to baffle or mitigate the sound. Plus mine, which is the combination of the more direct and proactive community outreach to prove that neighbors actually have touched this project. And with a mechanism to get the true understanding of what that noise level would be. That's where we are. Uh before I move to a vote, any final questions or comments from commissioners? All right, then I will go ahead and move to a vote, Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate.
Yes.
I will vote yes as well, so the motion passes, which is to the uh to continue this item. Pending information coming back to the planning commission uh on the items outlined uh in the motion. Before I close this item, Mr. Turner, do you have everything you need on this since it was complicated this evening?
No, or is um, yeah, the the motion to continue is pretty clear.
All right, thank you. Uh Ms. Jared and to the team, thank you for being with us, thank you for answering all our questions and thank you for your work on behalf of our community. We are very much looking forward to this community center coming online and serving all the residents of Menlo Park, we appreciate your efforts and have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you for your time and all your comments, I really appreciate it.
All right. And with that, I am closing item F. Two. And moving to item F three, this is to consider and adopt a resolution to prove a use permit for hazardous materials to install a diesel backup generator. For an under construction development, including a two-story office building and a three-story residential building with twenty-seven residential units and an underground parking garage. At fifteen forty El Camino Real, this is in the SP ECRD, which is the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. The generator would be located in the underground garage under the office building. Mr. Turner, oh, we're not, Mr. Pruder, you are with us now, so um welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chair DeCarty, yes, uh mostly uh. Planner Turner uh will be presiding over most of the items, but yes, I have this item and at this time we have just the one kind of continuing uh update that. My colleague Chris had provided, uh which is that we did have one public comment that came after publication of the staff report. It also included this project in uh the comment that was forwarded to your. Uh you and fellow commissioners today and mainly concerning just the uh nature of the usage of the generator, whether it would be temporary or. Uh frequently used or continual usage. And also the overall noise and concerns additionally with continued use of fossil fuels and carbon. Uh emitting um types of materials, so that is all for updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions and I'm also joined by uh the. Representative for the ownership and applicant team, Richie Ying, and he uh will join with a few remarks after questions for staff, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pruder, um any questions for? Staff uh before I turn to Mr. Ying and then public comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Ying, welcome, thank you for being with us this evening, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone, um I'll try and make it short, uh I thought it would be helpful just to give a current status of the project. Um it's actually no longer under construction, we finished construction earlier this year, um it's. Uh to give you a layout or context, it's basically an office building uh along with um a an apartment building. Uh the office building fronts El Camino, the apartment building front San Antonio. And it sits over a common podium that uh that is that contains an underground garage. And as I mentioned, the project was completed uh earlier this year and um. Uh about seventy percent of the office, I think, was leased. Uh and is now being occupied by a tenant. And we have become lease up of the residential building. So it is no longer under construction, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you very much. Before I go to public comment, any questions for? Either Mr. Pruder or Mr. Ying? All right, uh oh, Mr. Commissioner Riggs, yes.
Yeah, just to clarify for. The public, is this not the Springline project?
It is not.
Can you tell us, is it a adjacent to the north?
It is one block technically. To the west, but but yes, you go further up El Camino away from downtown, it's. It's about a block away or call it a block and a half.
It just helps for reference because um. Perhaps ironically, Springline had to come to us uh. Just less than a year ago, essentially for the same reason. Um so my sympathies, but thank you.
Yeah, no, we we it we're coming. I'm not sure if you were, your your question was trying to understand sequencing of how. You know, why this this, I guess, permit request is is um after we completed construction, but. It was always our intention that the. The generator permit was a separate permit from the building permit, it was a deferred settlement. Um and uh we've been working with staff to get to this point and along as everyone knows, there's other agencies involved, so. It's it's taken a while timing wise to get to this point, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm aware, thank you. All right, any other clarifying questions for staff or the applicant before public comment? All right, Ms. Begin. Back to you for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Chair DeCarty. As a reminder, members of the pilot can press the hand icon on your screen upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff if you have. A comment, for any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform. Staff at the start of your public comment and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you have finished your comment. So. Oh, okay, I see Pam Jones, so um. Okay, um I'd like to introduce Pam Jones. Um as a reminder, you'll have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your first and last name and address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation.
Uh yes, good evening, it's Pam Jones again, resident of Menlo Park in the Billhaven neighborhood, uh representing myself. Um I'm curious about the diesel generator being allowed here. Um since we're trying to get to zero emissions. And there was a big to do about um getting a a microgrid that was on the that would. Generate solar electricity for the new community campus. So even though it's in the basement, it's still going to emit. Um you know, some pollutants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any other comments from the public?
Chair DeCarty can confirm there are no public comments.
Okay. We'll go ahead then and close public comment and we'll bring it back to the virtual dais for questions, comments, and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? I'm happy, I have a question for the applicant, I'm happy to go while others are considering. I think it mentioned in the staff report that the alternative, which would be a battery-powered. System is unfeasible because of the space that would take up, can you? Share a little bit more about that, first remind us where this gen- generator will be located and what's around it. And then how much more space um would the uh a battery system take?
Yeah, the the generator sits in a fully enclosed room down underneath uh the podium in the garage. Um and it sits on what would be kind of the eastern wall of the garage, if you will. Uh so it is fully enclosed and it is um. It's a pretty large room. We did inquire uh about potential um. Battery alternative to uh diesel. And given the size of the pumps that are in the garage um. And the startup power that's initially required uh for those pumps. Uh the battery system that would be required to to be able to service the 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 startup draw. Uh would be several orders of magnitude larger than the room itself. Um and we actually did look at, well, what if we used a portion of the the bike room as well and it it clearly wasn't enough. Um and the, you know, obviously, the 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 project was approved with um, you know. I I guess technically it was supposed to have uh uh more parking, but through a shared parking study, we were able to. Uh the the project was approved with the the number of stalls that we actually built. So from that standpoint, um and given the fact that now we now have a tenant. Uh we can't exactly take away parking now, um so. That's the reason why the battery uh system was not was not contemplated, and I I'd like to reiterate that that the. In the staff report, you know, the the generator will only be, you know, turned on or tested once a month, so. Uh from a emission standpoint, the emissions would be very minimal.
If I, just to help understand that size constraint, how many parking spaces would that battery structure or setup take? All right, is it two, is it twenty, what's the? Size?
I I actually don't have that answer, um it 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 would. it would be, you know, probably ten to twenties, my guess, because the room itself is prob- the room itself is probably several parking stalls, right? So, um, you know, all, I don't have an exact answer, but they, our electrician or sub, electrical sub basically told us that it is several orders of magnitude larger than than the room itself and the room that, you know, next door to it, so.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners, and ultimately a motion? Commissioner Doe?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to reiterate Ms. Jones' comment about how in some areas of the city, we're trying so hard to keep gas water heaters furnaces from a home, and, um, you know, even though it's a drop in the bucket, it's this cumulative action of, um, all that we do, starting here. Um, in, you know, even though the generator room is enclosed, I guess it's still going to exhaust out through the, the roof, and it's going to the environment. Um, I just find it hard, oh, and, and another thing is, um, I, I just want to understand for my, you know, own understanding why an office building needs emergency power. I understand, you know, a hospital needing that, and I just maybe want to understand. I, I heard that Spring Line, and I understand that other office, no, oh, sorry, I saw, someone shaking their head. I just want to understand why an office, um, building needs emergency power. Um, trying to wrap my head around the, the need for a diesel generator.
Um, basically, in the garage, there are three sump pumps that are in there, and the, what, what basically happens is because of C three stormwater management requirements, um, you know, a large percentage of our site needs to be treated before it's dumped into the public system, right? And so because the, because the, 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 uh, project is built on a podium, we have to we have to let the water run down into the garage, into these sumps, and then they're pumped back up to the podium level into our bioswales before they actually exit the project into the public system. And so those sumps, you know, operate normally, you know, call it three hundred and sixty-four days out of the year. It's the one day where power goes off because of a big storm, and then the pumps don't work, and the garage floods because the pumps aren't able to pump the water, the stormwater, back up into the bioswales for it to be filtered out to the system, public system, so. Um, that's why we, we need sumps, or that's, sorry, that's why we need a generator to power the sumps when the power goes out. And they're not used every day. They're used, like I said, they'll be tested once a month and be used continuously only in the event of a power outage.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions? Ultimately a motion? I'm going to pause for a minute. Again, I've seen a hand go up for public comment. Since I set the precedent earlier this evening, I'm going to ask Ms. Begin to check with the person whose hand is up to see if it's a public comment on this item, and then we'll come back to the virtual dais.
Okay. Hi, Carol, I'm just checking in with you to make sure it's a public comment, and, and just, uh, please introduce yourself, first last name, and then, um, if you have, uh, three, sorry, three minutes to share your comment or question, and please, uh, state your address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organization affiliation. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Carol Grace. I'm in District Five, and I just have a quick question. Um, does it need to be a diesel generator? Could it be a gasoline generator? Gasoline is slightly less uh, polluting than a diesel generator? It's, it generates less particulate pollution? Um, is there a reason for having to be diesel?
Thanks for your, uh, comment and question. I'll just, I'll just step in for a second here. So technically, again, for dialogue, this would need to come through a commissioner. I'm going to take the prerogative as chair to ask this question on behalf of the commenter um, to you, Mr. Ying. So, ye- yes, please go ahead and answer it.
Yeah, sorry, um. So, uh, the reason for diesel is because diesel is a fuel that it, that is stable for a very, very, very long period of time. From an environmental standpoint, even though the, it, it may generate more particulate emissions, although the new diesel engines are pretty clean burning. Um, with a gasoline generator, you would have to, you would have to change out the fuel quite frequently. Um, it, you know, you, so you have a greater risk because you are draining the belly tank and handling, you know, hazardous materials. You do have a greater risk for, um, spills, so that, that's one of the big reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Ying, and thank you for your comment, um, Ms. Grace. Are there any other? Other comments at this time, Ms. Begin?
Uh, Chair DeCarty, I can confirm that, um, I do not see any further comments.
All right, I will close this second public comment period. Thank you to commissioners for letting that happen. I'll bring it back to the dais, and I see a hand from Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as long as we are discussing alternative fuels, um, although the city has already made a directive, I am curious, uh, through the chair, if I could ask Mr. Ying, um, how would natural gas serve uh, as a, um, fuel for a generator in lieu of diesel? I believe that burns much more clear. Yeah.
Uh, frankly, we did not, uh, look at, uh, well, let me take a step back. Um, originally, there was, at a time, there was, uh, we thought that there was a need for the generator to, um, supply backup power to the elevators in case of, you know, an outage or some, or something where the elevator, if you're, if you're in the elevators, it would, it would, you could get out of the elevators. Um, and then after, after during our design, obviously, we, we, we realized that um, with the hydraulics that we have, the hydraulic elevators that we have, um, there could be a failsafe where they just go to the first floor. So there was no longer a need, and at that time, we had already spec the generator. Um, and it, and the reason why for diesel again is that, um, in the event of, say, an earthquake or some sort of catastrophe, uh, your gas would be shut off, and you would want an independent fuel supply for the generator that is locally contained to be able to supply that, that emergency standby power.
All right, I, I didn't realize that, uh, we were still concerned about, uh, loss of gas, but it does make sense, uh, if a rigid pipe crosses a break in the earth, obviously, it's, uh, it's lost. Uh, thank you for your answer.
All right, any other questions or comments from commissioners or ultimately a motion? I'm, I'll make a comment here. Um, I've been consistent that, um, and I, I think the commission knows me as a champion of reducing uh, climate pollution in our, our city. Um, and I hate diesel generators, and I hate that we are continually approving these. However, uh, for total emissions and for the total impact in our city, uh, this is not an item for me that is the top priority. And looking at the two conversations tonight, one of the things that I feel great about is that we are working really hard because we're not only eliminating, uh, greenhouse gas emissions from our new community center, which is located in District One, but we're also eliminating the associated localized clean air impacts that have been so devastating to residents who have lived in traditionally industrial areas. And I think that's fabulous. Uh, the fact that we are doing this that runs once a month, uh, is not great, uh, but it's also, uh, in a part of town, um, that, um, is impacted differently. Um, but I, I like the fact that we are focusing, um, our efforts in this way on residents that have been so directly impacted uh, with the efforts that we just talked about on the previous item. Uh, and on this one, um, I would once again, um, begrudgingly, um, approve this use. So with that, I will actually go ahead and make the motion to approve as submitted by staff. Uh, and I see, um, Commissioner, or excuse me, Vice Chair Harris's hand.
Um, yeah, I, I too hear, um, from Chair DeCarty and, and others, and I feel the same, that we're really trying to move in a different direction, and we keep kind of stumbling over these projects where we our hands are kind of tied. Um, having said that, I would like to second the motion. I am, what I'm happy about with this project is that the parking has been reduced and housing has been added. So I just, I don't want to hold up this type of project, um, when we really need the housing, so I, um, would like to second this motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any commissioner comments or questions before we move to a vote? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. It passes five to nothing. Thank you for being with us, Mr. Ying, and, and best of luck finalizing the project.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, with that, I will close item F three. And that, uh, closes our public hearing this evening. We now move to item G, regular business, where we have one item. That is to consider and adopt resolution to approve the below market rate BMR housing in Lufi for conversion of existing light industrial commercial space to research and development space in an existing commercial building over ten thousand square feet. This is at eleven ninety O'Brien Avenue in the Life Sciences Zoning District. The tenant improvement is subject to building permit approval and is not a discretionary action. And I believe we are back to Mr. Turner once more with us this evening.
Yes, we are back. Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Um, I do not have anything to add to the staff report, um, but am happy to take questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner, and do we have anything from, uh, the applicant, or um, should I move to public comment after any questions?
Uh, the applicant is here. Um, he may, or he may not want to
All right.
say something.
Uh, Mr. Tarleton? The floor is yours.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity, uh, Chair DeCarty. I don't really have anything to add.
Sounds good. Uh, before we move to public comment, uh, any questions from commissioners of, uh, Mr. Turner or Mr. Tarleton? All right, seeing none, let's move to public comment.
Okay, I think you, Chair DeCarty, uh, members of the public, you can, uh, press the hand icon on your screen, or uh, number nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have comments. Uh, for any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comments. So. Okay, thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this moment, I do not see any, uh, comments or questions.
All right. In that case, we will go ahead and close public comment, and we will come back to the virtual dais for commissioner questions, comments, and ultimately a motion. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Riggs?
Um, generally, I am opposed to projects that do not physically provide, um, the housing that is part of the code for development. However, um, in the LS zone, I'm aware that there is not a housing territory, and it's not particularly helpful to establish housing that is not served by, um, supportive, uh, infrastructure. Nor is it particularly helpful to insert uh, conflicting uses in an industrial area, so I can, um, overlook my usual concern, um, and, um, I'll go so far, uh, you know, with no prejudice, of course, to, uh, uh, comments from others, uh, but I would, uh, move to adopt a resolution to approve the BMR in Lufi.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Uh, so we have a motion to approve as submitted by staff. Any further commissioner comments or questions, a second or an alternate motion? Vice Chair Harris?
Uh, I would agree with everything Commissioner Riggs just said, and I will second the motion.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Harris. We have a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Vice Chair Harris, uh, to approve as submitted by staff. Before we move to a vote, any final questions or comments from commissioners? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. The motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much, and, and thank you for waiting, uh, through a fairly long evening for this item.
Thank you.
And with that, I will close item G, which was uh, G one was the only item we had, uh, there this evening. And so that brings us to item H, informational items, uh, and Ms. Sandmyre.
Good evening again. So next meeting will be, um, in three weeks, on October twenty-fourth. And we have the Willow Village, um, project. And as I've emailed, um, previously, we may need a second night for that potentially on October fifth, so that, October twenty-fifth, so that will be the following night. Um, just if there's not enough time on the twenty-fourth. Um, so I just want to provide that update, and that concludes, um, update some future hearings, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmyre. Any questions from commissioners? Mr. Riggs?
Yeah, thank you, uh, through the chair for Ms. Sandmyre. What level meeting would this be for Willow Village? Is this the final planning commission review or penultimate?
Yes, it'll be the final planning commission review, uh, with the final EIR entitlements. And then, um, it'll be going to city council after that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Sandmyre? All right, seeing none, uh, Ms. Sandmyre, thank you. Mr. Turner, Mr. Pruder, thank you this evening, and especially Ms. Begin, thank you. Well done, and welcome to the team. Uh, and to everybody who has stayed till the end. And to everybody who has stayed till the end tonight, thank you for being with us. Have a great evening and a great rest of your week. Be well, everybody.
In particular, thanks to the chair for your assistance, including an item F two, where you made sure we did not trip over our action on the project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.